I have a problem. I need you to make something disappear. It's everywhere and I'm fine, by the way. I can see that you're fine, okay? I'm very happy that you're fine, okay? If you were gonna kill me, you would kill me. Did he say something before you? Well, say something.
Yeah.
I don't know. Ask. I don't know, Cheryl or who?
Yeah, so the whistles are three. We'll talk about it when we get to the reporter. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meetings. There is nothing to report for tonight's session. So we will begin with the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands on a nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice. All right, we'll start with approval of tonight's agenda. Changes or questions on the agenda question. Then from the council, I'm going to the public. Any questions or comments on tonight's agenda? All right, then we're gonna go full steam ahead two minutes. Now we have a number of minutes.
Should we take a vote on the, have a motion?
Oh, please, we should.
I move that we approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
I have to have a reason.
Sometimes I move a little too fast through the administrative portion. Okay, minutes. We have four minutes, January, February, March, April of this year. I think if it's okay with everyone, we'll batch them as a group. And if you have any questions or comments, just point out, please, which minutes you're referring to. So councillors, do you have any questions or comments on the minutes? I had no changes in the edits either, so let me then go to the public. Are there any questions or concerns about the four? Right, bringing it back to the council then for a vote.
I'll move to a vote for all the minutes from last. Four months, right?
And is there a second? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up are council committee assignments. Start with the councillor title, so maybe we'll move this way.
I'll be to report out. I mean, either.
Old habits.
I'm happy to report that I finally have a report. The animal advisory committee met on Wednesday, the eighth of, what month are we in, May? And, you know, it was just mostly a general discussion of the mandate from the resolution. And then we began by focusing on aggressive dogs, figuring that that was the most immediate need. And just nothing, but there were no motions, no decisions, but recognition that we need to move at the on the issue front with prevention and the consequences side. So at the next meeting, it was suggested that we have the sheriff and the animal control officer join us. And the next meeting is on the tenth of June.
Right, until what?
There was nothing to report from May's pod. It was a nice meeting, but they didn't get any real information. We did have a, on our last trail meeting, we began to, we got through at least working on coming up with some post ideas. And that we were actually hoping to be looking. Our first actual post we plan on putting on the ground, we came up with an idea that would allow not too much ground disturbance. And we had an idea how to create the Rantaria looked at the idea and they didn't think that it was a sturdy enough idea. So they about stepped in and helped us create most, most plans that they think will actually be more likely to stay in the ground what they were about to believe. We have talked about it a lot, I believe, and then somebody people are gonna probably try to push them out. So they're still weren't, they're coming in and helping us. So we got some experts, they found some their ideas. And the next time we meet, we will hopefully have their input. By the end of the year, we'll actually have the first actual idea of how to put in, we'll see more of them coming up. So we're a little bit following behind on what we're hoping to do. We are looking like we might be going somewhere. Trying to get some better ideas since we're talking about this.
I just have a couple of quick things. Eli and I had a meeting with law enforcement April 11th, and I know he's gonna be talking about that a little later in meeting with resulting in new contracts and reduce costs to the cities. That was really great. I had attended the community organizations active in disasters, Go Out! meeting on April 29th. And it was mostly a report out from the 12 different working groups. And so I'm not gonna go into detail about it, but just know that there are folks out there thinking about how to support rural areas with food needs and emergencies and response and all this kind of thing, including across the different agencies. I was honored to attend the Ranteria's feet-to-truss luncheon on May 1st. That, as many of you may know, was the transfer of the harbor property to BIA to hold for the Trinidad Ranteria. It was an honor to be there. The tribal council was there. The director of BIA was there. There was also Rex Law, the county supervisor, was there. I don't think Jackie was on, or I would have her comment, but it was just really touching to see the excitement of all the tribal members and the others who were present there. And there were many comments made about the work that the Ranteria had done on the harbor, the main pier, et cetera, all the shore water improvements and the memorial lighthouse. Let's see, we had the CERT community disaster preparedness day this past Saturday. And that's why the councillors have little orange whistles on their desk, because we gave those out to everyone who attended. And we also gave away prizes. Larry Goldberg did a wonderful presentation on kind of general emergency preparedness. And the CERT team hosted five tables on things like wildfire prep and earthquake preparedness. I was thrilled that Cowfire came. We had four representatives from Cowfire and their inns parked outside for tours and so forth. So the low light is that it was Saturday. It was a beautiful day. And we had this from one to four. So of course, we only had about 13 people that were able to attend. So we're gonna try to plan another event in the fall and we're hoping for really dismal weather so that we can get a good, get a good. It's the only event I've ever thought about cancelling because the weather was good. So, yeah. We need to schedule a water advisory committee, so I'm a little behind on that. But I had reached out to the state water board and then asking them to send someone. And so we have, I haven't been able to close on that, but I thought that'd be a good water advisory committee activity. All right, so that's it there. So are there any questions or comments from the council about the committee report outs? Any questions from the public, committee report outs? Okay, all right, wonderful. Then we'll move to staff reports and I'll turn it over to our city manager, Eli.
Hey, thank you. And I'll start off by turning it over to Lieutenant Josh McCall from the sheriff's office.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, having a little, it's a little quiet on my end, but just my laptop, so just wanted to confirm. Uh, excuse me. So, you know, looking at the greater area Trinidad stats for the month of April, and again, this would be the outlying area as well, not just the city proper. Calls for service were down a few. We were 152 for March, down to 148 in April. However, reports taken were up. We had 18 taken in April.
Lieutenant McCall, I'm sorry.
No problem.
The fire alarm went off right after you asked if we could hear you. We could.
It's all good.
We're ready to go.
Ready? Okay. So, yeah, I figured you guys just drowned me out. That's probably better anyways. So calls for service for the Greater Trinidad area. So this would be obviously the outlying area as well, not just the within the city limits. We're down by a few from the previous month. We had 148 for April, which was down by just four from the previous month, 152 in March. That being said, reports taken were up. We had nine in March. It was up to 18 in April, three arrests for the month of April. We had 12 felony investigations, which was doubled from the previous month, and 29, showing 29 misdemeanor investigations, which was significantly up from the one that was taken in March. Three assaults, four burglaries to either buildings or vehicles. One vandalism, one general disturbance. None of those calls were a significant increase or anything from the month previous. So I'm not sure without diving into the stats a little bit further, why the misdemeanor investigations were up so significantly. But obviously, those investigations that they, those resulted in weren't of those, those types of crimes. So aside from that, the other numbers stayed pretty consistent with the previous month, no spikes of anything or anything that looks like any kind of a suggesting you have a trend or an uptick in any particular crime. Looking more specifically at stats for within the city limits. For April, we had a total of 35 either calls for service or proactive activities by deputies in the area. Four of those were just general Trinidad patrols, patrols, three animal problems, three business checks, three follow-up calls, three transfers to other agencies, likely fire or medical, couple of alarm calls, a couple of assaults, couple pedestrian stops, couple of vehicle burglaries, and then one each of just other random things, civil problems, incorrigible juvenile patrol check, lost property, found property, traffic stop, that type of thing. And again, nothing that's appears to show any kind of real uptick of anything crime-wise or problem-wise. And then just looking for that month, looks like Saturday, Tuesday, and Wednesday all kind of tied for the busiest days of the week with nine calls for service on each of those days. And daytime hours between eight and two being kind of the busiest, busiest time for those. And that's all I have here in front of me. And so I guess if there's any questions.
That was good. Thank you very much. I'm really happy to start seeing animal, you know, listed here as the type of call too. Because in the past, I don't think we've seen that as much. So obviously, we're getting folks responding to, I mean, not that we want animal problems, but we're getting people, we're getting a law enforcement response to that, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. I want to just thank you because one of those calls was me. I called because we had a skunk that looked like it was dying right in front of our house. So we skunk, it was very sick. And she came up and talked to me and said, you know, that skunk's probably fine. And then a dog came along and ran away. But it was throwing up and miserable. It was nice to have him come up and help us. So thank you.
Thanks for sharing that.
Move to strike that.
Thank you, Lieutenant McCall.
Thank you.
I'm back to you, Eli.
Thank you. Yeah, we guys, yeah. Wonder if they're related.
Yes, I bet they are.
So in the city manager's report, the water tank and pipeline project is continuing. Most of the work on Edward Street has been completed. We're working on that statement thrive right now. They're putting in water pipeline from the water plant to the tag site. And then also, we did have some residents complain about the quality of the road on Edward Street. So they were able to attend to that and pave it for the short term right now. And then as soon as they're done with the portion of Edwards, there's a couple more things are waiting. And when they're done with that, they will repave that area. So it will be better than what it is right now. But at least it is properly paved enough that peoples aren't getting damaged. The heart, the health care was canceled. They wanted to have entertainment in the town hall, which was fine. And then have boots outside and possibly utilize the school brand suit. The only problem is with the entertainment, they were gonna sell hundreds more tickets than what the capacity of this room is in order to make everything work out. And we were concerned because of the fire. So we didn't want to have an issue. And I know at least personally, if I buy a ticket somewhere, I'd like to be in there. And if not everyone, it could be here at the same time, it could be an issue. So so as a result, we're gonna try to find larger venues. They had looked at some larger venues before they were talking here. But the person who was having that was, is from the Trinidad area, the Greater Trinidad area. And that's why we were hoping to have it here. We were looking forward to having it here. But that's the reason, we didn't want to create a problem that was unsafe. The Trinidad Chamber is planning their Taste of Trinidad. It will be on summer solstice eve, which is a Thursday, June 20th, from five to seven at Saunders Park. Also, in addition to Putin Drinks, a band is called Boomy's Apartment. The next chamber mixer will be on July 17th. Again, I think it's in the five to seven pit time period. And it'll be at the Secret Beach Retreat, which is a short-term rental on stagecoach drive. No John Lee, that's his site. The Chamber also awarded two $1,000 scholarships to former Trinidad school students. Who have, one's going to a charter school and the other one McKinleyville High School. So this will help them with their college. And the actual member on the moral trail, the goal is to have it in July, working with the CHRI management team. Today, we had a meeting and we'll have a follow-up meeting probably on Thursday afternoon. Today's meeting was with RCAA, representative from the CHRI, myself and Public Works. And the RCAA was able to cut a path through the new portion of where the trail would go. Which is actually according to the CHRI, the old portion, that's where the trail naturally went. For 1989, 1998, somewhere in there. But in the late nineties, it was diverted to its current path. But now it's gonna go back to the original path. And even asking that, you know, if we're gonna have a cleanup that day, not when I say that day, on middle of July, we're gonna have a cleanup, a group of students and their, and actually parishioners from Redding, along with the parents will be coming to do a beach cleanup. And the CHRI are saying that maybe it's possible for Axel Lindgren III to greet them down there and explain to them about the significance of Old Oak Beach and so on. And then Sarah and I also talked about something that she had mentioned before, which would be to have like some education that's working with the, with the elementary school across the street, and then also for the community, where we can have Axel Lindgren III and or other representatives from CHRI help educate us all on the history of this area. Okay, and then the Van Wijk Trail, we do mention in there that the, at the last council meeting, the up slope property owners, two of them had attended. Subsequently, they both reached out to the CHRI Ancestral Society and heard back that the ancestral society near our tribe were maintaining their opposition to having the trail rebuilt, even if it is up slope. So that's just an update. We're continuing, we're now having coastal commission meeting with the local staff next Monday. Trevor and myself and Steve, I think Steve will be there too. Steve, so anyway, we'll be talking about the coastal commission next. The Trinidad steps were, we had gotten a bid from RCAA last year. And we're planning on improving those steps this year. So we just wanted the public to know, the same group RCAA that will be renewing the Van Wijk Trail will be working on the Trinidad steps. And then the last thing that's mentioned here, which is important, is the water plant. So specifically, I start off with April, because in April, it was brought to more attention that the water plant was having a hard time keeping up. Even at night, when it was producing 15,000 gallons and 12,000 gallons were used between the hours of midnight and 3:00 AM, which was quite unusual. So that led to our CPO feeling that there's some distribution line that's broken. So staff started looking around Public Works and they were unable to find it. It took a few days. But eventually, it started to bubble through the surface of scenic drive. So, so anyway, it was taken care of. But as a result, according to the loss report that Gabe prepared, we lost 31.8% last month. So the cost of that with the labor time, and then also in March, because we had high turbidity, both of those months ended up costing more money than we normally would pay in recent time to Coleman Engineering. The past six months up until March, we were averaging 10,426 per month. However, for the month of March, because of the turbidity, which took so many, the plant kept calling and had to be restarted and so on. So it took again a lot of labor. So that increased the cost by around 4,000 for that month. And the same thing happened in April because of a plant having a hard time keeping up. So it caused us an issue. Also, I've identified a math professor from College of the Redwoods to assist our staff in understanding the complex math problems that are posed on the water treatment operator exams. They've been doing well on the exams that they've taken, but they said that the math problems were there now. So as a result, we're making that arrangement. And also having one of our employees who is taking an exam this week, the end of this. So hopefully, things will, will, you know, be able to happen for several of the operators where they can successfully pass these exams. So that's the update.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
About the traffic calming situation, I think we had some council done, what, last month?
Right.
Where are things now?
At the next meeting in June, Josh will make a presentation of the traffic. So the traffic council done and then GHP analyzed them. And they're gonna present that to the council in June.
Yes, the only comment I had was on the water plant. I mean, unfortunately, we had a leak. So I wonder if it's time for the city to consider putting an ad up to hire a T3 plant operator? Or, you know, what you think about that, Eli?
Yeah, we're holding off at the moment because we actually just hired a Public Works employee who is interested in pursuing a, the water, you know, water plant. And we, and we do have two people and actually a third one also who are currently taking and or are going to be taking their exam. So as soon as we, and then of course, we're gonna have some math training. So as soon as we see how all that plays out, then possibly by June, we'll have a better idea. But, you know, since we do have a number, and then when we did the interviews for Public Works for that temporary position, one of the people who interviewed has a degree, I think it was from Berkeley. But anyway, I can't remember right offhand. But it's a degree in, which is related, the natural resources, which could be very helpful for the water plant. So I am going to be talking to him this week, probably on Thursday. So anyway, we have a few things that are going on and then we'll have a better idea next month. So you can ask me. Uh, so so anyway, we have a few things that are going on and then we'll have a better idea next month. See if you can ask me that.
Okay, I'll ask you about it next month. I, um, you know, in in the Water Advisory Committee, this came up and it's come up in uh some public feedback that I've received that the city is is taking too long with its, um, you know, its its process to kind of uh train people up and get them certified and that, um, you know, it's been what, a year since our last plant operator left? More than maybe more than that, I can't remember.
Yeah, it's been a year. Yeah, it it's it's been a year. Yeah, a few months extra.
Yeah, so we pursued this this um approach, uh, leveraging an outside contractor to run the water plant, which has been expensive and so folks are giving us a lot of feedback on it. So I'm just gonna say that yes, I am gonna come back in June and I'm gonna with with uh some real strong recommendations about this because we've been talking about it for about a year now, so. Um, I I just think, yeah, we should really consider just hiring a chief.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and and again, uh, when we had originally the data, we were unsuccessful in finding someone. Uh, and eventually Coleman, with the people that they were ha- having a help at the plant, uh, one of them was interested and and that's how we got it. It was not to our advantage. But again, you know, I mean, you can always reach out.
Yeah, so maybe, well, maybe we should revisit it.
Yeah.
Our future meeting, but um just kind of the process that we're, we have gone through and that we're going through. Um, and is the person taking a a test this uh next week, is that a T-three exam?
T-three.
Okay. I want, and I hope it, I wish that was. Okay. Other questions for Eli on the staff report? Any public comments or questions regarding the staff report? And or law enforcement? I guess we already talked about that. Okay. All right. Thank you, Eli.
Thanks.
Um, at this time, we'll do items on the floor and uh members of the public may comment on items not appearing on tonight's agenda.
All right. We used to announce that about um the forty, oh, can't remember which annual ceremony, Memorial Wall, we held on Sunday, May twenty-six at two PM. And uh the names of two hundred and sixty people lost their experience. We ran back pipes and paths, don't read them. And the coast guard representative, you know, the flight over, so seating, um, the the ceremony is usually thirty-five to forty-five minutes and but we're all invited and it will be at the Edwards of Trinity site. The the Trinidad Memorial Light House at the Harbor Project is nearing completion, looking awfully nice and uh so there's a little confusion on whether it will be there. Yeah, so. All you can comment.
Thank you. Good for it to them. Are there public comments this evening? Right, it's quiet tonight. Okay. With that, then I'll move on and we'll um go to the consent agenda. And I guess first I'll ask the councillors if there are any, anything you want to pull from the comments. Right, and any public questions or comments about tonight's consent?
Um, I think uh on number five, Resolution Twenty Twenty-four oh six, federal functional classification map changed the scenic drive, is it possible to know what that is?
Pull that and discuss it. We can, we can pull that and make that the first agenda item. Uh, does the council agree with that uh change and?
I'm just curious, Miss Lester, if you just want us to to do a quick yeah, show them what that is or do you want to discuss?
No, no, I don't know, but again, I just wanted to get dry.
Okay, if it's just a quick discussion, then we'll do it now. If it's more than that, then we'll agendize it, so um, uh, who wants to? I I know enough to be dangerous, so I think I would kind of staff on this one.
While Eli's looking it up real quick, I'll just tell you where it came from. It came from the crack that developed because of that leak. Oh, the um, the city engineer, Josh Wolf and I took a look at that crack and he immediately says that there, that in the in the in situations like this where we have catastrophic failure on scenic, we need to have that road classified under the federal status so that we could receive funding in the event there is a serious emergency. And apparently it wasn't, so he jumped right on it, contacted the representatives of the county and said, hey, I I want the Trinidad Road to be in that category, so then in the event there's a big expensive failure in the road, the city could qualify for a federal. I'll let Eli confirm, I think.
Yeah, my summary there. Yeah, yeah, actually, when I had reviewed this, uh, it it's very simple portion that I wanted to read. So basically, scenic drive is currently identified as a six minor collector. And the new proposed classification is to make it a five major. So goes from a minor collector to a major collector to better identify the the condition and the traffic that it receives.
Like, all of scenic drive could be classified in that way.
It's consistent with
Federal disaster.
Yeah, it's consistent with how the county Public Works had it classified and we had, the city's jump was just not, so this this puts that whole road in that category.
I think there's a definition online on the uh on the federal website and I I don't have it in front of me, but it did say that, you know, kind of the difference between minor and major also had to do with speed. So I was surprised that they would, that they would uh agree to this actually, but um it'll be good if they do because it becomes federal apparently. All right, uh, is there a motion with regard to the consent agenda at this point?
Move to approve the consent agenda, I'll say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, uh, let's move on into tonight's action items and discussion. Uh, but we start with the very controversial, I'm joking, sorry, I'm joking. Proclamation twenty twenty-four dash O two, recognition and support of North Coast Lemonade Day on June first, twenty twenty-four. So, um, you want me to cover this one, you guys?
Yeah.
Okay, since I, so I got a letter from the uh lemonade people. I should know who they were, but anyway, so uh they were asking, uh, throughout Humboldt County, there is a uh proposal for a North Coast Lemonade Day. I thought it could be very fun. It's about uh getting children involved in entrepreneurial um activities and things like setting up lemonade stands, but there's, but they're getting support uh in general from like business people and so forth. So it sounded pretty fun. Um, I don't have a lot of background, but it is apparently a national celebration that now is is coming to Humboldt County. So that's uh, any, any questions or comments about lemonade? Please. Okay, I thought we'd have a good, healthy debate. All right, any uh public comments about uh declaring June first Lemonade Day? All right, back to the council. Do, I'm gonna move to approve since I've brought it to the council. Any?
I will second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, uh, then we move on to discussion item number two, which is regarding the contract with Humboldt County Sheriff uh office and this is to provide law enforcement services to the city of Trinidad. And I mentioned earlier that Eli and I met with them in April, so uh this would be a good time to get a little more information about that.
Thank you. Uh, so in the packet, there is a letter from Regina Fuller, who's the Deputy Director of Financial Support Services for the Sheriff's Office. It basically summarizes it and then there's a contract attached. Basically, our uh contract for last year was two hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-eight. And uh the new proposed contract will drop it down to sixty-seven thousand five hundred. We have already paid for two quarters, which were a hundred and thirteen thousand eighty-four dollars. So we are going to get a reimbursement of overpayment of forty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-four, plus have a lower contract for this year. That's thanks partly to Blue Lake, because they're in the same situation we are. And apparently the Sheriff's Office was using two different formulas, one for a city that's a little bit larger and and we being the smaller city, so now we have the same formula as Blue Lake. And uh, that's why our, and and like Cheryl said, that the two of us met with the the captain and with Regina Fuller and uh went over different things because some of the numbers they had were inaccurate. Uh, they had gotten from one of the county offices that we had seventy short-term rounds. So we had to correct them that we have a maximum of thirty-two. We currently had thirty, so uh so they've adjusted the contract to reflect the thirty uh because they added those numbers in as if people were living in there year-round. So they increased our population from the three oh nine to like four hundred and ten. But either way, it brought the contract down considerably and that's
Yes, a question. How was this caught? I mean, that's a sizable uh change in in what we're paying the sheriff.
Yeah, I wouldn't use so much the word caught uh as as it is because of Blue Lake. Uh, when our contract went up to two hundred and twenty-six thousand, their contract went up uh over three hundred thousand, close to four hundred thousand. And and even though we're a smaller city, uh, we have more sales tax revenue than than they did. And as a result, uh, it was too tight on their budget, so they told sheriff, you know, we just can't live with a contract like this for just patrol. So uh, so anyway, they negotiated. Uh, originally, we're gonna have a negotiation with Trinidad and Blue Lake and then they says, okay, we'll negotiate with each party separately, so they started off with Blue Lake and Blue Lake was able to bring down the costs of their contract. And then uh Blue Lake made a point of letting them know that, look, you can't use two different formulas. Uh, you know, you should have one consistent formula. So as a result, when they applied the consistent formula that they negotiated with Blue Lake, it brought our costs down considerably.
How long had we known of the two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar price tag?
This was since July of twenty twenty-three.
And we had thought that that is what we were going to have to pay for?
For the year.
For the year? And it is only because Blue Lake uh demurred for their price?
That's the main reason, that's the main reason, but uh what we were doing is we went ahead and we decided to pay and move forward with the contract, uh, because it was still considerably less than what Blue Lake was paying, number one. And number two, uh, our community wants to have more law enforcement. So as a result, we didn't want to give up the sheriff.
Yeah, yeah. But if my understanding correctly, if Blue Lake hadn't noticed and and said they couldn't afford it, let's talk, we would still be paying two hundred and twenty-six thousand.
It could be, yeah, it's possible, yeah.
Although I think another contributing factor was um Regina Fuller had the deputy director there. She had had to leave because she had um an injury, I believe, or something. And so um part of it was when she came back, she really went through the books and got, you know, things really organized and looked at all the costs and how those costs were distributed. And so she did a stellar job, I think, of going through and kind of rationalizing everything.
Who is she?
She's the is Deputy Director of Financial and Support Services at Humboldt County Sheriff's Office.
Oh, yes.
So she's, yeah, she's at the sheriff's office and she wrote the rich shirt, trust with her diligence.
Yeah, so originally, uh, our contract uh was lower, but what they did, and Regina had done it before she went on leave. So we weren't paying for one deputy, even though we were originally receiving one deputy on the ground. And then at times, we had a deputy and a half. But uh even with the patrols, they were basing it on one deputy. So the two twenty-six was based upon one deputy and the cost of benefits on top of them. So that's the formula they use, but then now they're using a different formula.
Yeah, so overall, great news, budget perspective. Uh, any other questions about this? All right, any public comments or questions about law enforcement? Mr. Hakenett?
This uh, this is wonderful. Thank you. Blue Lake, send them a cake or something. Uh, this is a credit to the city financially, uh, which we desperately need. Uh, I took a spin through the contract without reading the package and having a meeting and I've read the previous contracts. Um, I didn't notice anything really missing. I want to confirm there's no change in the level of service with this new contract from what we have, which is basically patrol, no full-time deputy, correct?
That's true.
Okay.
Yeah, and we specifically asked them, you know, can you guys give us a deputy? And they, they
There's still money.
They're still in them.
Fair, all right, thank you.
And I think the other thing to add is that the animal uh shelter and animal control agreements are coming next. And those, one of them went up a bit, one of them went down, and so they kind of balanced each other out. And so we're back to, you know, so we we have a good uh, pretty good deal there as well, so anyway, but that'll be coming right, Eli.
Yeah, and and actually, uh, the last numbers we got, they both went down.
Oh, they did, okay.
But uh in the process of getting those contracts to us, they provide the same services for other cities in the county. So they're waiting to work out the whole package for everybody and then they'll bring it forward to us. That's why it took a little bit longer than this one, because this is, this and the Blue Lake one were only tailored to two cities. The others are tailored to the whole town.
Is animal control under sheriff or a separate department?
Under the sheriff.
All right, other questions from the public regarding a law enforcement agreement? All right, uh, then I'll bring it back to us. There, uh, do we need a uh decision on this? So I think um I will make a motion to approve the uh Humboldt County Law Sheriff's Department Law Enforcement Services Agreement to the City of Trinidad.
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, the next item is a discussion decision regarding Resolution Twenty Twenty-four dash O eight, calling for an election on a proposal to continue the city of Trinidad's uh point seven-five percent transaction and use sales tax for four more years. And so I will turn that over to staff.
Okay. Then Dave, July table.
Sure, thanks. Uh, thank you, Eli. It's, this is a a resolution that's required with many requirements that we, the city's obligated to fulfill leading up to the election. And uh it, I think I mentioned that at the March twelfth meeting, the staff presented the history of the point seven-five tax, the voter approval percentages for each election held and how the revenue serves not only the city but also the community at large. So uh at that meeting, we heard from public comment and I I kind of just want to point these things out because I don't, I like it when these things are in the record because uh it makes it easier to fall back on when, like, um, many conversations we've had recently, where we want to go back to the record to kind of refresh ourselves. So if you just bear with me for a second here, in the packet, I'll continue to say that, you know, the council heard public comments from Trinidad area residents who felt the tax was unfair, if we recall, on March twelfth, uh, because they were inadvertently paying it without the ability to vote on it. Uh, the council also heard from in-city residents who expressed an interest in fiscal responsibility and accountability and supported it. So the last thing I'll note is that the staff uh presented that this was a general tax and it could be spent at the discretion of the council for the purpose of not only serving the city's needs, but also in ways that invest in the greater good of the entire Trinidad area. So uh with that, um, a follow-up from that meeting, we talked about putting a list of in-city addresses on the city website. Um, Councilmember Ladway brought that up and requested that to happen in April and May, and that's been done to assist in facilitating, you know, when people get in the predicament of where they, you know, are are asked to pay that tax. Uh, and at the conclusion of the meeting, the staff was directed to prepare documentation for a ballot measure for the November election uh regarding the add-on. So that is what this is today, is a follow-up from that meeting to just put it in a resolution format. The state board of, or California Department of Tax and Fee Administration is going to be looking for this resolution before it will begin to implement this task, should it pass. So this is step, uh, I guess you could say it's step two in this process. We'll be bringing back a resolution, I'm sorry, an ordinance at the, at a future meeting, probably not next meeting, but in July, basically saying a continuation of the ta- of the ordinance that we currently had, should it pass in November. So it's a sort of a preemptive approach to to ask the California Department Fee Administration to not begin decommissioning the tax until we've had the election, right? So this resolution, long story short, must be done. So this resolution, long story short, must be done, and it's building on a directive that the council has given staff to continue. So hopefully, there's an answer to your question.
I just wanted to say, thanks for getting those list of addresses. I think that was a major concern. And I really appreciate that service to the greater Trinidad area residents.
Where is it on the website?
On the website right now, it's under doing business. So on the far, there's a menu bar across the top of the website that has, you know, city government and, you know, very, I think, four or five headings.
Yeah, so it's the fourth.
We're one closest to the right, doing business. There's several categories in their business licenses and so on. And then the sales tax, it's going to have its own, its own tab. And anything that we do as a result of this, we can put up there so that the public can, you know, see the transparency.
Yeah, and I think we also talked about coming up with a, I guess, a short list of things that the city does that do, that does actually benefit the greater Trinidad area. Things like the cert team and the, all of the kind of investments in that. And then there were some examples. So it may be only four or five things, but maybe when we have the discussion, maybe we can brainstorm what those are and make sure that, you know, that some of that money that we are getting is going to.
And we produced one of those in the voters guide last four years ago. A real nice list of how that money is used and such, so.
Oh, great. Okay.
It was ten, twelve bullets. It was not small.
Not a small number.
Not a small number. It was a very, I thought, a very inclusive list of ways that that money benefits the greater.
Fantastic. So yeah, maybe we can just resurface that then. Okay. Other questions from the council or comments or Gabe? All right, any public comments about the proposed sales tax? Okay, I don't see, so I'm going to return it to the council.
I moved to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh eight, and I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Right, on to our next item of business, which is the discussion decision regarding Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh nine, adopting the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting and Review Procedures, and the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh one, adding new, oh, wait, I don't want to be insulting. It's in the packet, adding new chapter four to Title III of the Trinidad Municipal Code to provide informational bidding procedures under the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Action. And I apologize, folks, I wouldn't have started reading that had I, I would have abbreviated. But that's the item on the agenda. So am I turning it over to Gabe or Eli?
Well. I can get started briefly here.
Okay.
And then maybe Gabe can add. So basically, we have both a resolution and an ordinance. And we're following the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. This is a program that's available to all public entities in the state. So what it does is it spells out the procedure that's necessary for purchasing. And basically, when you need to get bids and also when you need to get formal bids. And then also when you could do something based upon, like a sole suit, specific, a type of use that, such as windows here in the town hall, getting someone that isn't expert in the historic and architecture and can do type of windows that would be compatible with the design rather than just someone that does windows in general. So basically, it says here that the city's under seventy-five thousand population, which we are, and it says benefits the city of Trinidad and adopting this app includes simplified bidding and expedited contracting for projects that are two hundred thousand or less and reduce number of bids based on project size. These provisions reduce the time effort and expense associated with the bidding projects under two hundred thousand and simplified administration for these projects. And the procedures for bidding for large projects are typically handled by a contract city engineer and generally would remain the same. Gabe, I don't know what else you'd like to add to that?
I think what you just said right there, where it says provision, these provisions reduce the time effort and expense associated with the bidding projects under two hundred thousand and simplified administration for those projects, I think it says it all. I mean, that's what this city has been up against for several, if not a decade or more. When we start getting more grants, as this town has gotten hungry for grants and really good at getting grants, it just really sold out how specific the bidding projects, the bidding process for public entities is. You know, because there's so many hoops you got to jump through. But then the one thing we didn't, so we started marching to the beat of that drum in every little thing we did. And every time we went looking to hire an electrician to do something in the town hall, we realized that it was a can of worms, you know, to work for a public entity. So to draw a connection between why this is before you now, then, and, or how it got here, it's our town hall projects. So we have this informal committee that we're talking to, Wes and Kelly here. And Eli and I were meeting to talk about how we can make improvements to the town hall. Well, without something like this in place, we were up against, you know, formal bids for projects over three to five thousand dollars. And it's just not feasible when you got to do windows and you got to do floors, you got to do painting. So this, the kicker here with this one is two hundred thousand dollars is the threshold for maintenance projects, which gives the city a lot of latitude to get these projects done. And that includes the tennis. You know, so having these barriers removed, we still have to, you know, we're still going to do our due diligence. We're still going to get the informal bids. We're just going to call three painting contractors, for instance, make sure they have all the proper licensing and insurances to do work for public entities. But we're not going to, we're not going to just go hire one buddy to come paint the town hall. There's still informal procedures involved that keep the public entity honest. But what this does is it raises that threshold significantly for the amount of money that we can spend to get things done. And with a lean staff, we need, we need to be able to call, get some informal bids, and then just go for it. Otherwise, with paperwork, it can be, it just really can. So by adopting this, so there was a guy named Richard Marks. I don't know if you're familiar with this guy. He used to attend our meetings every once in a while and call out when we did something wrong. I think with the town hall solar project, he caught that Haven Electric didn't have its Department of Industrial Relations registration. And it was just an oversight. I mean, they had it, but it expired. And this is what people do. They watch public entities. If you do one thing wrong, they'll be there to catch your actions and to put you back in line. And he's the one that recommended. So whatever he's having worked on. You know, I don't think it's really been brought to our attention, and the city does maintenance projects. But I think, like I said, a decade ago, things were a little different. You know, we would just call people to have them redo the town hall, you know, office, you know? And we would, we would want to have somebody to do it. But like I said, the more we've gotten involved in grants and the more we really started watching how the I's are dotted and the T's are crossed, and the more money you receive from other higher-level entities, we've been kept in check. You know, if you didn't know, you could just get your wrist slapped and say, I didn't know, but we know better now as a city.
Do you think that's why, like, the curve hasn't been fixed over by, you know?
Great question. Now, that, I think, is something maybe Eli can answer. You're talking about the sandbags?
Yeah, just that's why, yeah.
Below the curve, the drop. That would be a question maybe Eli can answer. It has to do with the trust that you're.
Right. Yeah, because we have to get their money.
I asked about the two hundred thousand. I'm just curious how that number was generated.
It's not a number that we have. It's a number that is set by, I believe.
By the act.
The act, which is enforced, I believe, by the state comptroller's office. So that number is specifically for maintenance. We can't build anything new for two hundred thousand. It's got to be strictly for maintenance of existing projects.
No, I just asked because you mentioned, you know, five thousand dollar projects, and we're now upping it to two. So it's a game there that it's, well, but it's the act that sets that number. Exactly. So.
So am I understanding that up to two hundred thousand, we can do informal bidding?
Yes.
Over two hundred thousand, we have to do formal.
Yes, and new construction. Any new construction needs a process, but it's strictly maintenance.
I mean, I'm all for streamlining so that we can get things done because we do get really slowed down sometimes by the process. And that process is labor-intensive for staff. I think what the, as the kind of fiduciary responsibility, we're saying, the fact that we're still saying we're going to get multiple bids where appropriate, and it's just the form that it takes. So, right, so I want people to know that we're still going to want competitive bids. It's just that we don't have to go through those.
I have one more thing on that note is any decisions that are made for projects like the windows of the town hall or painting of the town hall will come back before the council, even though it's budgeted. We'll be letting the council know. So we want to maintain that transparency during those processes. And we'll be able to explain that we received three informal bids. This one was the lowest, the company, you know, I'm not the painting, whatever, they're going to get the job. So, and we'll be asking for permission from the council.
Okay, any other comments from the council or questions? All right, and from the public, any comments or questions? All right, bringing it back then to the council.
Move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh nine. I'll second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. You're on number five in today's agenda, which is the discussion presentation and update on the water rate analysis.
Okay. So as stated in the agenda item packet, at the next council meeting, which we're going to have a second meeting this month because of the budget process, we will also have Samantha Ryan, who is from RC AC. And they're the entity that is doing our water rate study. But this is just a preview before she's here, just to sort of like give you some information and a background. So hopefully, we can focus a little bit more on what she's presenting and discuss that rather than, you know, trying to figure out, okay, where do we get here with everything. So. So number one, yeah, so just to know that she, her services are being provided as a grant from USDA. So the city is not paying for the services rate study. So there's various options to consider. There's the base rate, which is everybody pays the same base rate, whether you use water or you don't use water. And then there's a consumption rate, meaning after a certain amount of gas, you'll be paying for each gallon. And then there's possible categories. We currently have the category in-city and outside-city rates. And most cities, if not all cities, have some kind of an inside and outside rate. And in the attached memo from the attorney's office, they did give an example of Arcata. But they're not the only one. They just used the example of Arcata. And actually, some of the other cities, such as Fortuna and Rio Grande, are even higher. Outside city.
And we're going to discuss that in the next meeting, correct? So people will have a chance to read, and we got a public comment about that and so.
Exactly, yeah. So the other thing that's mentioned under possible categories is something that we haven't used, and that is meter size. So Samantha Ryan was explaining that that's another way that you can charge different rates. We don't have that many different meter sizes. And as a result, you know, we may be shying away from that particular approach. So then I say attachment one is the memo from Mitchell Boffering. And in that memo, it explains a little bit more as far as what the law is. And then I go on to say a factor to consider is that from twenty twelve and twenty seventeen, when we built our last rate study in twenty twelve, which was effective for five years to twenty seventeen, it had an automatic COLA increase of two and a half percent per year. If we had done another rate study in twenty eighteen, we could have been as high as, because that was six to seven years ago. We could have been as high as fifteen to seventeen and a half percent as far as base rate. Could have been that much higher. And the reason I'm stating that is, is that I'm hoping that the public doesn't get what I would call like a sticker shot. You know, when they feel like, gee, why are we getting this huge increase? I want people to understand that they really saved money for the last six to seven years. So as a result, you know, just by us increasing now a little bit more than what they might be anticipating, it doesn't mean that, you know, we're basically going from thirty to sixty. We could have been going, whatever. I'm just using that as far as when you're driving. So those numbers don't mean anything, but I'm just saying that when driving, you know, we're already moving. So that's, we do have a water rates in there. So anyway, she will be presenting, I believe, three different options for the council to consider. And in addition to that, we can always tell her, you know, what about this or what about that? And maybe pursue some other options. In other words, if one of them is not the meters and you think that's one you want to pursue, that would be fine. So the water fund needs to cover the cost of operation and maintenance plus to have a reserve fund for future CIP, capital improvement projects. So in July of twenty twenty, the city council transferred nine hundred and seventy-five thousand from the water operating funds to the water reserves. So a lot of people refer to our reserves and say, why are we using the reserves to pay for operating costs? Well, yes, I mean, ideally, we can use the reserves for other uses, but we have to use it. But what I'm saying here is I use the phrase, and this is just my own phrase, sort of a reverse transfer. In other words, it was from the operating funds. We put it in reserves, but now we need it for operating. We use it for operating. So the city council has communicated, or I'm sorry, has committed to reimburse the water fund with general fund revenue to cover the additional cost of Coleman engineering above the cost of operating the water plant with licensed cities. So what I'm getting to here is basically people from, residents from the public and water users from the public had said that the cost of Coleman was much higher than they felt was necessary. And as a result, they felt like, hey, you know, we shouldn't have to pay for that. So what we're doing is saying, instead of having the water fund pay for that additional cost, that we could have that transferred from the general fund reserves, which we do have some general fund reserves. So I took that, and I had presented it at a prior meeting, but basically, I took the difference of how much for the past two and one quarter years Coleman has cost us and how much it would have cost us if we just operated the water plant with a chief plant operator at the forty dollars per hour and add to that one or two T-two to help assist. So when I did that, the difference was basically three hundred thousand. So a suggestion, which I think she's incorporating that Samantha Ryan and her numbers, is the potential of having three hundred thousand dollars going from the city reserves, general fund reserves, to the water fund. So that helps bring down the overall cost of what the monthly bills would be for the resident. And then I said additionally in June, which that's the council, yeah, I'm saying it, we could consider additional funds or at a future time, depending on whenever we have a climate meeting. But we're thinking possibly June that we would have a meeting. And then after that, we quit it out to the public, see if they. to see if they like uh the options. Now, if we come up with other options beyond what Samantha Ryan is gonna present, that might take us an extra, you know, meeting. What I'm getting at is the city council could consider additional funds as a loan to the water fund if necessary and available. So if we have funds available from the uh general fund reserve and we feel like, you know, we'd like to help out the water fund in the short run, we can do it as a loan, and then when the water fund, you know, starts collecting at the higher rate, then we can pay off the loan from the water fund to the uh general fund. The main reason for that is that the general fund uh is for the three hundred and nine uh residents of the city, the households of the city, because that's part of the city. Versus the water fund is a enterprise fund, which is a separate fund, and we have almost fifty percent of the water users are outside the city. When I say fifty percent, uh one one third are actually, so so two thirds, meaning like two hundred and some uh are in the city and one hundred and some are outside the city. So so when you make a loan, one third of the people who are gonna benefit are going to be outside the city. So ideally, you wouldn't just keep giving the money from the residents to people that are outside the city. But this three hundred thousand should be taken into consideration when we're saying, you know, outside city limits, that we are giving a benefit. It's something that was from the city coffers, from the city general fund, which is coming from the property tax, coming from the T O T tax, and and coming from the regular sales tax that every city and county receive, which is one percent. We automatically all get one percent. We only happen to have an additional three quarters set that uh that sometimes people outside the city. And even that, generally speaking, if you line an high ticket number, uh I mean, like a car, it will reflect exactly where your zip code is and 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 your residence is, that you are in a zip code, but you are in the county and therefore reflects the county rate. And then I finish it off by saying, after completion of the water rate study and choice of real option by the city council, a pro two eighteen process will take place. So that process is that the city will mail out a notice to water customers of the proposed rates and hold a public hearing after forty-five days to assess the public's opinion. So basically, we do a mailing, we give that mailing up to forty-five days. People don't like the rate increase, they can object to it. If over fifty percent object to it, then we have to go to the drawing. So so hopefully that gives you at least a general idea of the mailing.
Yeah, so Eli, uh is it true that at one time we were increasing the rates two percent a year and then it just stopped increasing?
Yeah, it's it it the two and a half percent, you can only increase for for uh five years and then you have to do another rate study. So that's why, that's why it stopped.
So there hasn't been a rate study for seven years, in other words?
Yes, it's uh, yes, twenty seventeen was when it ran out, so twenty eighteen, ideally, we would have done a rate study.
All right, the uh June is the meeting when this woman is going to?
She she's actually gonna come to the second meeting in May. So she'll be here on the May twenty eighth. And 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 then uh she'll probably come back in June, but we'll see, we'll see how it progresses in May, and and then she'll be able to tell us if she'll be able to come back with numbers in two weeks or if she needs anything like that.
I was just thinking that it, the the more that the public uh knew about this uh these options being presented and and explained before we send them something in the mail, that it, we might get more buy-in than uh the surprise of opening your mail to, oops.
Yeah, sure, no, that's.
So i- is there something, it's, well, we would have to promote it in some way. These are open meetings, you know, that doesn't mean people are gonna come.
Yeah.
Unless they really know that this is what's being discussed. Maybe we can.
Well, I'll I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, uh I mean, ideally, the council, you know, wants to try to pick an option that they think could work best, and and then we wanna get buy-in from the community. So we do have uh around three hundred and twenty-five water accounts. So if you send a letter or something right now to everybody and tell them we're gonna talk about it at the meeting, you're gonna have probably three hundred and twenty-five people here, and it'll make it difficult for us to make a decision. So ideally, we'll make a decision, and then they're given forty-five days to evaluate it. It wouldn't affect to let them know we're gonna be discussing that, definitely, and and that's what we do through the process. But we want to make what I call, you know, a a decision that we feel, you know, works uh properly rather than having confusion and commotion, because anytime anyone wants to raise anything, then people are gonna be concerned. I I I know I used to be.
I would probably come at it slightly differently, I I think actually having a number of people here would be good.
Yeah, no, it really.
It would take time, but you know, the nice thing is that we get everyone to help us.
Okay.
I I think, I mean, I I think that's kind of the point of having public in the city council meeting, right? Is to 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 get us to think a little bit differently, like, you know, rather than we come in with a formed opinion.
Right.
It's modified by what we hear from the public.
And and people are gonna respond by email if I let her, if I come to the.
Yeah.
It it'll, we'll still get plenty of public.
We'll get plenty of input, yeah.
How come we didn't do a rate study in twenty eighteen? So it could have just increased small over the last couple of years instead of having a big dump right now.
Yeah, I I don't know, I mean, the idea would have been, that would have.
In five years from now, I wanna make sure we have another rate rate study so this doesn't happen.
One of those.
Right.
I think Jack Porter did not do it.
Stephen, I just ignore them.
I was just gonna, you guys were gonna say it, so I just put it out there.
I I really don't remember.
I didn't even.
Yeah, we were discussing about this at that time and also, this is, I don't know, stepped through the last three and four.
Be honest, uh the real reason is is it it wasn't broken, so it wasn't in in the eye of anyone.
That's it.
And until you put the focus on something, people are just happy to pay the bill and not worry.
Yeah.
I think um the only other question I had is, um there was a lot of, like, kind of, there's a lot of assumptions that went into the creation of this model. And so are those assumptions gonna be exposed when she presents? In other words, like, what you went through, Eli, of like, well, I, you know, it was, it would have cost forty dollars an hour for this person and so on. Of all those assumptions that went into creating the cost model, we will see, and Gabe's nodding his head, so that's good, because I, yeah, we may have some math questions.
Yeah, it it'll reflect, you know, what the actual cost to operate the water plant would be.
Of course, yes, yes, okay, great.
And and we're basing it upon uh, you know, having a C P O who's a T three operator, who's a city employee and and having two T tubes, so it's based on that for them, not not on the current for them, just a transition for them.
At what year was it that the uh city council voted not to go with Humboldt?
Oh, wait. Yeah, I can't remember, it was twenty two or twenty twenty.
Twenty one?
Twenty one, yeah.
I was, is that right? It was twenty one?
It was either twenty one or twenty, it was a lot of them, yeah.
I, yeah, I can look it up. Okay.
Other, it was by Zoom, I was in Salt D'Artina, Alaska. My internet ran out right when the vote was going on, zoomed back in, we voted on that thing three, two or three times.
Yeah.
Yeah, to make sure that we had an accurate vote and accurate null zone votes, so that's why I know when this happened.
That's.
I was.
So we can live on some, at that time, it was about that, so Zoom has worked better.
Sure.
I know, that's terrible, yeah.
And other questions or comments from the council on this?
So we gotta get information about the, what she's gonna present in advance.
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah, yeah.
And I would just ask, uh I just remember previous discussions about the amount to hold in reserve, and I remember this, the city general fund reserve was meant to allow the city to operate for eighteen months without a single dollar coming in. That was, that was our discussion decision on on how much to hold in reserve. I would love to know from this analysis what considerations are being used for the reserve. I also remember authorizing a a expenditure of seventy thousand dollars for filters that had aged out. And so what is, what is the reserve based on? Is it, is it replacement of, you know, certain elements of the of the water, is it a plant? Is it based on all kinds of different things? So that's why I would like to know, is what is that reserve? Because that's gonna inform the rate, is how quickly do we need to build up the reserve to maintain it over time and that kind of, so.
Yeah, so uh Steve Allen prepared uh at the request of Samantha. Uh basically, these are the things we need within five years, these are the things we need like within ten years, so on, so.
Yeah.
So uh so basically, we're focused on, you know, what we need to get done in the short term, but we wanna have the big picture at the same time, too. Uh anything to add to that, Dave? This game was with me when we.
And does the, I'm sorry, does the water fund pay for busted pipes, or is that the public works general fund? Distribution?
It's all water.
It's okay, so distribution is part of water fund, that's what I thought. Because that also informs this, because all of our pipes are aging, not, sorry, many of our pipes are aging, so. That would also inform the reserve, is how much do we do on on the replacement.
And how much is we recoup through grants, grant funding? Yeah. That'll be interesting, okay. Uh any public comments regarding the water rate analysis?
I I missed two Samantha Ryan, is is she a state person or?
She is with R C A C, which is the rural community uh
Action?
It's not Action, uh Assistance Corporation.
Is that a state agent?
No, no, it's it's a, I I guess it's a nonprofit, but it it's it's a, it's a corporation, it's not part of the state.
Is she being paid by the city from the water fund or?
No, no, uh she is being paid by USDA funds. Now, some of these other water rate studies through R C A C are paid for through uh the department, what, they just didn't directly get it through uh USDA.
Right.
And we appreciate that, because she writes a great article, and she also has to make sure that the information is accurate. There's nothing better than reading in a newspaper and seeing the accurate information.
Rural, Rural Community Assistance Corporation.
Yeah.
Thank you. Right, Aaron, you got a comment?
Yeah, just a couple of comments, um one, I have a strong urge the city and council to put on the calendar in four years' time to begin the process of commissioning our next rate study, so we don't run into this gap of time where we're not able to have coal, as if that's inappropriate. Um my second question is, what uh input are you planning to seek if any from the Water Advisory Committee? Being a member of that, I think it's an opportunity to get more public input and to get some more opinions, which we we choose to support for this community. Um and then I would also strongly um take a different tact that I I think as much notice as can be given, as much opportunity for the public to have access to all background information. During this next meeting, they can firsthand hear a Samantha's presentation. I think the cost of mailing a notice to the three hundred and however many uh folks is well worth the possibility of people in here. And speaking from a planning commissioner standpoint, when we're desperate for feedback, I would love to have a revolve, people, I would love to have a long meeting every now and then for rate reports, and this is one that is just that, so I really encourage you to take that request from me and provide direction to do that, I think that would be a huge missed opportunity to to not do.
I will, yes, I agree, I um will schedule a W A C, a Water Advisory Committee. Um I mentioned it earlier in passing, but I had a hope to get the state water board there, and I haven't heard back from them, so I won't hold it up anymore uh trying to get that done, um but I I will continue to work on that, but let's get something set up for the water rate.
I mean, one thing that could be.
Be a good first pass, right?
Yeah, I mean, one thing that could be done is to specifically invite all the Water Advisory Committee members to each of the meetings that we have Samantha present, so that this lady, you know, they're well versed on everything. And then they can give us some input, you know, what what we could do, if you'd like, is after, you know, the council, you know, ask questions or whatever, turn it to the Water Advisory Committee members and then turn it to the public.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if she's coming in June, then maybe we could do a Water Advisory Committee before that, but I guess we would need her there, so to your point, it has to be kind of scheduled together, right?
Actually, yeah, I got an exact order. Yeah, I mean, if 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 you want her, uh then, you know, ideally, it would be together. I mean, we can reach out and find out how it would all work with her schedule, because uh even though she is in Humboldt County, she, most weeks, she's four days outside of them.
Okay.
Now, if I heard you correctly, she's coming in May and then again June?
Yeah, May twenty eighth, and and then uh ideally to the June uh meeting, the council.
And I'm just spitballing here, but I suspect that the May meeting will generate uh enough questions that would need some further investigation.
Right.
So perhaps the Water Advisory Committee meets after that May meeting and does some of the heavy lifting of, well, let's look into this, let's look into that, I'm just, again, I'm just making up ideas, but.
Okay, that sounds, yeah.
That way the advisory committee can benefit from the work that's being done and also steer it before it's all like, well, I've already done this report and I'm moving on to my next job, that way the R C A C has some time to pivot and be.
I think it would be good, I should also let the rest of the community members know that this presentation is on point, kind of, actually, attend the meeting if they choose.
Yeah, I'll say that, Aaron, and that's a good idea. Okay, other public comments regarding the water uh rate analysis? Okay, seeing none, uh back to the council, I think at this point, this was an update, so uh unless there's anything else, we'll go to the next item, which is the presentation update regarding F Y twenty twenty-four budget and the upcoming budget preparation timeline. So Gabe, is that one going to you? Yeah, okay.
Much less.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'll just let Gabe take the lead on it, and I can also add as needed.
Okay.
Do, um maybe I should throw this up on the screen. To have some visuals.
Make that larger.
Yeah.
Good.
Stop me. There.
That last discussion was a good segue into this one. And what we're talking about tonight is more or less a a timeline and a chronology of events that will occur between now and this next and and what we expect to be the uh adoption of the budget on June eleventh. Which is why we have our May twenty eighth meeting this month, two meetings. Um but as you can tell already, there's gonna be a lot of heavy topics regarding city finances, primarily with the water fund, the focus. And tonight is more, I I just wanna kick it off and and we'll talk about the timeline, you know, we can throttle comments and maybe questions with the timeline laid out, so we know when in the best time would be to approach certain things, but tonight, I figured we could just introduce the process and um you know, field some questions, talk about where we are today with regards to our current financial status with the general fund and the water fund. And then we'll blaze a trail for the next meeting, which will really drill down with some period of numbers, and then hopefully open that conversation up for more fine tuning, and then come back in June. We can have more discussion, or we can come back with a finished product. I'm pretty confident that the budget this year uh. the budget this year uh processed, with the exception of the water fund and how we kind of have to approach the water fund. Uh, I, I'm pretty confident we can, we can nail this in, in the next month. So what, and I think we have to, because we're not having a second meeting.
Right.
So whenever we talk about budget, I like to kind of go back, you know, rewind just slightly, so we can kind of pick up where we left off before. And for anyone new in the room that may not understand the situation, they have an opportunity to engage in the process with a little bit of knowledge. So I'm just gonna kind of talk, this is the summary that I put together, just a, a one pager here that, that really kind of took our outline from today to meeting. But I'll talk about how the annual budget here is a, is a spending plan intended to reflect the goals and priorities of the city council and to keep up. This is something I'm really starting to see more and more lately, is keep up with increasing pressures of state and federal policies that set the framework for government operation. Uh, both of these forces are competing for resources. So we got the state that wants their share, the feds that want to do it their way. And every time I open up my email, I find another request or demand for a reporting from some higher level agency that really it, it's starting to kind of become very cumbersome, you know, it's, it's starting to, uh, every time I, every time I open my email and I see a report demand, I think, okay, who do we have on staff that's going to do this? You know, so I don't know if it's a matter of COVID money flowing around or water uh resources being tight in the past, but then they kind of opened up when we had the drought. Well, when the money starts to flow, then these agencies want to kind of add on like some, some reporting documents, you know, once they, hey, take some money, we got money for you. But then, then they start to talk about how they want you to report on the money that you spent, right? So city, the city of Trinidad is really good at going to get money, but now all of a sudden, you know, we're starting to find ourselves stuck in a hard place, having to report on everything that we're doing to a certain, so. So uh both forces compete for resources and the balance between mandatory and discretionary funding spending continues to tilt in favor of mandatory, especially. Um, let's see, so inflation, social dynamics, co- during the COVID era brought subsequently growing fees to this city operations that are going to be in tension in the years coming, starting now, and specifically with the water fund and how we lost staff. During COVID era, people were not T three operators, were not coming hand over foot to drop off resumes in Trinidad, so this is, this is what we're selling right now. We're really trying to put the water fund back together. Uh, we also received some money to the tune of about a hundred and ten thousand dollars from um the higher up governments during COVID for COVID relief, which we have access to now. We didn't spend that money, although we claim that we did for public safety and we reported that we did, but um certainly we have some money left open that we need to use. And uh the federal government has opened up opportunities for those monies to be spent, not just for plastic shields and rubber gloves and face masks anymore, but now it's uh water infrastructure and all kinds of other exciting things. So we found ourselves sitting on a pile of money now to the tune of probably about, I think it's about seventy thousand dollars sitting in our fund that we can use to maybe creatively backfill the water fund where we've lost a ton of money, right? So, so uh the, as the budget um process unfolds, we're going to examine what resources exist that can be used to navigate, you know, the higher uptake and also find, you know, personnel structure, stay on passive long-term priorities and meet the growing needs of the city based on the current forecast that I can trend. At this point right now, I don't really see too much happening. The state obviously is pulling back. They're, they're having some financial, massive financial difficulties. Uh, and they'll be possibly, uh, they're dipping into their reserves significantly and so does the county. Um, right now, the way I see Trinidad and I recently received, just very recently, which is why you don't have it yet. Uh, we had to engage services with our past auditor, Ralph Marcello, because at the mid-year budget and even at the last meeting, we held, um, we talked about some of the, some of the uh general fund numbers. And I didn't have an audit from twenty twenty three to really hang my hat. So we were basically working the unaudited twenty twenty three fiscal year end in numbers. Uh, when Ralph agreed to come back in March.
Yeah.
Just recently in March, he came up to Trinidad and we hired him to, to basically reconcile our twenty twenty three statement to make sure all the numbers were truly correct. But he also um gave us some reconciled numbers for the year end of December twenty, or December twenty twenty three. So he went six months ahead, because I know that we had a lot of concerns about the water fund. And we really, I was nervous about trying to make any forecasts or predictions based on numbers that we just did. So I have some numbers here that basically suggest that the Trinidad's general fund continues to grow every year. And in twenty twenty three fiscal year end, it actually gained two hundred thousand dollars to now be close to about two point two million dollars in reserves, which is really incredible. But on that.
It's on investments?
It's interest on investments, that's um money that the city has wisely reserved in past years dedicated to various categories such as budget stabilization, uh capital improvement reserves and various other um various other projects. And as we know, that revenue source of sales taxes incredibly volatile. You know, we saw it during COVID, where in Trinidad it went up and other places it went down, you know, because people shopping online. You know, and, and having their stuff delivered instead of going to frickin' worse stores, for instance. So um the general fund reserves are in a healthy place. And part of the reasons why we gained two hundred thousand dollars in the general fund in twenty twenty three, this was last June, was uh we also didn't spend like we wanted to, you know, because we had some serious staffing issues in terms of having people that can get out here and help us spend money. And we run into these problems like this uh cost accounting thing that you adopted tonight to kind of blow the doors open on that. So we can start spending money without having to have a grant staff constantly there holding our hands every time we want to hire an electrician to come and fix the light. So um I think that Trinidad is faring, I'll, I'll say that Trinidad is faring very well from the general fund perspective. Currently, very healthy for a small city. As we know, though, two point two million dollars isn't a whole lot of money. Look what happened to the water fund in the last two and a half years. You know, a million dollars can dry up like that. So Trinidad's reserves targets are um, are right on spec with what is expected of in, in both resolutions, but also some of the, some of the own policies that the city has created for itself. Um, so that's one of the reasons why I feel like the budget process over the next couple of weeks, if not month, will be pretty smooth. It's the general fund is the, the biggest portion of our, of the city's discretionary spending.
Can I ask for a quick, Gabe, will we see the audit findings then for twenty three?
Uh.
At the next meeting or?
We will see the reconciled financial statements. Ralph led his, he, he had audited for the city for nineteen years.
Yeah.
And he retired two years ago. He let his uh, his auditing credentials, CPA credentials lapse. So he came out of retirement to do about eighty percent of the work. So that we can then hire an auditor to do the final audit recommendations, to give it their stamp of approval.
Yeah, I only ask because Humboldt Transit Authority is facing a similar situation where we just had our audit of twenty twenty three last month. That a lot of municipalities are, are just sitting around waiting, 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 so. I just don't want folks to be alarmed that we haven't had our audit from last fiscal year.
Well, we, we should feel a lot better that we've had our statements reconciled.
Yeah.
That, that is a huge part of it.
Yeah.
But, you know, as we've learned and we are probably going to learn the hard ways, a lot of times, you know, audits are tied to steps in other processes, such as grants, you know, we're required to submit our audits to the state controller's office every year. If not, we could be fined.
Yeah.
So we need to, Eli's working on this. You know, last time I checked, we were searching for an auditor that can do the remaining twenty percent of our financial.
And, and as a side note, I mean, once we pass the percy procedures tonight, uh then this is going to expedite it.
Yeah.
So I, um, a couple of things I put in this, in the packet, I, I uploaded these documents to the packet for for archival purposes. There's no decision-making process involved tonight, so I just wanted them to be with this packet. I and, and something that I can display, you know, for council review, it's while we're talking. Um, the, the current year is kind of my very first step. When I look at the, you know, audit from the prior year to find out how much we may have put away or how much we spend in deficit, then I, then, then I can kind of illustrate and narrate, you know, to you. If we propose deficit spending, well, you kind of have to look at city or government financials over the course of like a, a two or a three year period. Basically, the last two years, you stocked away three hundred thousand dollars and this year you're planning on spending overspending fifty or sixty thousand dollars. It doesn't seem nearly as bad as if you tell the public and, and you recognize that you're deficit spending. Why are we deficit spending? Why can't we live within our means, right? So I like to look at um the past year and I also like to look at where we are today and um currently the April financials are in a pack, they're not the most fun to look at. They're um, unless you really, you know, are interested in diving and geeking out on those numbers, which I like to do. Um, but if, but I also like to talk about the big picture, you know, for, for this room and for this venue. I think it's nice to drill down when there are concerns, but I also think it's really nice to look at the big picture, because then you can see what your goals and priorities were. Where we landed, are we on track, are we on track? And, and then course correct as necessary. So examining the financial statements, uh first of all, through April are in the packet. And um that's going to be my first step is to really get into those. Um, but what I also will do, and I'll make sure that's in the next packet, is the reconciled financial statement. So it, we typically put those statements in the packet when there's an audit, right? Here's our audit, it's in the packet, it's done, it's over. We don't have that right now, but we're going to put these statements in, in, in lieu of. Uh, so the big picture is, is something that I wanted to kind of talk about and I think I also included in here the mid-year review that we just had, which uh was kind of eye-opening. Uh, and it, and if I just scroll quickly to the mid-year, I want to just point out for, um, maybe for Katie and, and Jack, because I, I know you guys have been through this before, but you know, we have, we have four major revenue and expenditure sources in the city, right? There's the general fund, which is, uh, it covers our administrative uh payrolls, it covers public works payrolls, it covers police and it covers fire. Police is also covered by a COGS grant, but any overflow, which now we're not going to have next year likely, is going to be covered um by the general fund. There are two restricted funds that the city is managing, they call, another word is a proprietary fund, and that's the water and the cemetery. Water is legally bound to be the proprietary fund, which means that the rates cover the costs. You can't go dipping into the general fund and backfilling unless you do it intentionally. You can do whatever you want with the general fund. You can put the money in, you have to make it by resolution. Council can't, management and staff can't just go put money in places. Water fund money, let's just say, going out to do anything else with has to be a loan. You can't send water, water surplus money anywhere. It has to stay within the fund, because the ratepayers have to understand that the rates are specifically set to cover the charges. You can't just go slush, create a slush fund in the water fund. You have, you have to be able to justify those costs. And then we have special revenues, uh, uh, that's gas tax, money that comes from the pumps at the gas stations. When people put gas in their tanks, thank you very much, when a, when a five hundred dollar, uh, you know, RV load of gas goes into a tank and then they get back on the freeway and they take off, they leave a chunk of change behind for Trinidad, that's lovely. Um, and then there's uh also TDA funds, uh, it's uh, what do you call it, uh, transportation development. Those funds are used to pay for the bus service that uh Steve, if you sit on the HDA board, that's, that money comes in from I believe it's through HCOG and then we just pass it right over directly to HDA to pay for our annual bus service contract. Uh, and then we have COGS fund. COGS funding comes from uh federal government funding. It's uh it's a, it's money that comes to all cities, all agencies, and typically Trinidad sees about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for that. And we put that right back in to cover the sheriff's contract. And we may have surpluses coming here, thanks to the reorganization of how those funds and those contracts were cost, cost it out. And then we have our grants, right? Grants are huge. Grants, right now, I think we're probably backfilling the city's staffing, general fund, uh staffing funds to the tune of about a hundred and sixty thousand or more a year. So that pays for most of our grant salaries that are for our administrators. And then it also goes into when Kyle, Derek, anybody, myself, Eli are attending water intertime uh meetings. We're attending these weekly uh tank and pipeline meetings with the, the contractors doing the water. Um, these, these are funds that um the grants actually do a lot of, they pay, pay a good portion of the city. They pay almost all of the grant administrator's salaries, but then they pay a little bit here and there for various staff that participated in those projects. Um, so the general revenue sources are sales taxes, occupancy taxes, fees for services such as building permits, uh rents and franchise incomes, which we get from PG&E, we get from uh some link for running their lines through town. We collect a small portion, it's a very small percentage, I think it's like two, three, something like that, percentage of the gross uh receipts that all the customers in Trinidad pay that comes back to the city on a quarterly basis. And those revenues are unrestricted. You can use them to buy a playground, you can use them to fix the town hall. Those are called discretionary expenses. Um, restrict, restricted revenue again are uh water, cemetery, transportation, gas taxes. You can't use gas tax money you know, to put a new sound system in the town. We get audited for those funds every. Um, I, again, I, uh, the staff report from the June thirteenth meeting was our benchmark. Uh, when we hold that June meeting, that's when I take the budget and I take all of the interesting comments that the public has made or the council has directed staff to you, and I try to write them in a, in a narrative that you can understand. Because when you're looking at a fifteen, twenty page budget, you don't, you can't say exactly, it's hard to read it and say what it's doing. Are you supporting law enforcement? You're, you're supporting the, the, the town's desire for additional law enforcement. Well, you can put a number to that and then you can spell it out specifically in your, in your narrative, right? So I try to put these narratives together um at the adoption of each budget that give us uh, um, a nice roadmap as to uh what is expected for um accountability. Not of the council, not just of the council, but also state. So um, let's see if I can get to the big picture. So there's a document in here that uh we adopted in twenty twenty three. I think it's uh dragging on the screen there, might be a little bit hard to read. But as you can see, the, the, the profile of the city's financial status in the, primarily the general fund shows revenues of right around eight hundred thousand dollars. That is what the city typically brings in. And when, when I get asked a question from other cities and other, other people in the city and government business, they'd be, what's your general fund budget like? That's, that's the answer I give. I'll say, by, by, uh, less than a million dollars than they'd like, right? But then when they find out we've got six million dollars in grants, they can't believe it, you know, it doesn't make any sense. It's definitely a unique all city like this. Uh, and then our expenses that come out of these revenues, typically what we do is uh identify them as, it's a little blurry. A general fund admin, uh public works, fire, police, cemetery and wasteland. So uh I know I said the cemetery front, fund is a proprietary fund, but it's not by law. It was just set up like that. And in fact, our previous auditors, our audits have suggested we roll a cemetery fund into the general fund. I'm not necessarily a fan of that, because we also, you'll be hearing from us in another month or two, at least, maybe month, you know, month. Uh, some adjusted cemetery rate structures, which has been a, was a promise in, in, in our budget that we just adopted, that that would be looked at. That's an entirely separate conversation. Um, but I, I roll it into this budget, because some of the cemetery expenses go to public works employees who have to maintain, most of them. And as you can see, our expense forecast for this current year a little clearer, but um, is it my? It's a little, little hard, okay. So we expected when we adopted this budget this past year, uh, of, of a deficit in the general fund of ninety one thousand. But we knew at the time too, that we had a surplus of probably two hundred thousand from the prior year, and we knew exactly what, it's because we understand. So I'm finding out in the December twenty, uh, the December thirty statement that Ralph Marcello provided to us that we're seeing approximately, I think, so far, uh, as of December as of December thirty one, so far, we've had a surplus of about forty thousand dollars. Now, we're only have, we're. Now, we're only half, we're halfway through the year. So we're not going to hit the two hundred thousand dollar benchmark, you know, surplus that was from the prior year. And that was a rollout of COVID year. We didn't have the staff to spend the money. This year, we're probably going to see that either the budget balanced completely, we're not going to be deficit spending or a slight surplus. So that has a couple, there's a, you know, a lot of it to do with staffing. We lost a public works employee this year who were not paying the salary for, for at least half of this year. Which we just began recruiting for a new public works and hopefully we'll have someone hired. It's halftime help. So, and some of the goals I think I listed here as highlights. In, in this big picture and honestly, you've seen this before and we intentionally last year. You might should say intentionally last year in your budget focused on getting back to work. You know, not necessarily trying to bite off too many pie in the sky projects, which is why we ended up with a surplus before. Because we realized we couldn't do it unless we had a good core staff. So this year, when we, this, this current, this past, this current fiscal year, we wanted to just maintain status quo. But also do some very unique things that we heard were problems, which is sort of. Focus on staff retention, upward, upward mobility and pay to make sure that we had a core group of employees that were trained, that were. Able to help us achieve the goals, help Eli achieve the goals that you've set for us. And I think we've done a pretty good job with that, but. Instead of getting too far deep into the, the highlights for the general fund, and like I said, we're in really good shape, I figured we'd talk a little bit tonight on. You know, just to kick it off, because I think it's also important that we get some direction from the council. And how to proceed, but I think we also have some, some goals that we want to share with you as well, which Eli and I talked about recently. But, and I'll share with you again here in a second, but. I think the general fund's in really good shape. And I think over the next two weeks, I'm really going to drill down to some of the numbers, get the financial statements. And start to prepare the charts that show where we're at as of today and here's what I think we're going to need for next year. And as far as help goes, when we provide that document to you. I'll try to give you a summary. I know Katie likes summaries. You know, we'll, we'll put together a nice summary, kind of explaining how far we're going to go in terms of any kind of. Plans for deficit spending or spending some, saving. And then, and then that's where we're going to give you the opportunity, if it's okay, and even tonight as well, to, to throw out some of your discretionary. Wish lists that we can try to incorporate, because you are the people who hear it from the public. What you feel is needed and you're elected to represent it, right? So it's your job to direct to staff. Here's some of the things that we want you to do, guys. If you can somehow show us where some money will be budgeted for these things, because these are the things that you're here. So, that being said, we've got obviously some conserve goals, which we're not going to hit this year. But with the KUKA ordinance that we just adopted, it'll hopefully give us the opportunity to really get the wheels turning on the town hall. We all know that the town hall needs some love. We know that it's an election year and we know that there's a sales tax hanging in the balance. So I like the idea of trying to take this summer to really. Put some of the visual wheels in motion so that when the people are driving by town and then they go home and they see a ballot that says, hey, do you want to keep the sales tax going? You see, they, they think about the police cars that are going around town. They think of Pacific Coast Security, all the things that you've. Been telling the city, hey, we want this, guys. And then also maybe seeing a nice town hall, maybe seeing Edward Street repaved here when the intertime or the tank and pipeline project gets finished. All the benefits of living in this city. And in the ICA, the tennis court, you know, adding a pickleball element to it, which we're really hoping to do by the end of the summer. So. So the budget hopefully will reflect not only some of the things that you've been asking us to do for the last two years. But also poise the city in a position to be able to. Be accountable for the money it earns. But as far as the general fund relating to the water fund, I'll, I'll say this, that the water fund is, is. I think the way I put it in last year's staff report was that it was leaking. Yeah, and it is leaking oil and Eli's got a plan, which I think is a good one. And hopefully we'll hear more about it at the next May twenty-eighth meeting. The water fund is out of money. The reserves are, are gone, right? But. The general fund is. Your reserve tank in this particular case. And I, I think what, what Eli and I would like to do next, either the next meeting or the June meeting, is to get the council to adopt a resolution. That will allow the general fund, either on a monthly, quarterly or annual basis, to replenish the water fund until it's shored up. And it can sustain on its own. And the first step in doing that would be this, would you say, transferring money from the general fund of three hundred thousand dollars. And we'll be able to explain to you how this is justifiable. To shore the water fund back up so it can sustain until the rates go into effect. So that's one step. But as far as staffing goes, the water fund rates, as, as was brought up earlier. They are going to be based on what we feel is our dream budget, not the, the crazy budget. You know, not the unsustainable budget that we currently have. We're actually, we actually developed a budget. Before we started the rate process that included X, Y and Z operators in-house. And hopefully be a, everyone is trained who's working for the city in water treatment. So that there will always be the next person up in the event we lose an operator. So I, other than the financial statements and other than talking about, you know, some of the goals that this budget currently that we're. Using and experiencing is. Has, has got, has done for us, which I think we touched on in the mid-year budget, like how far we're going, what we're doing, what we checked and we didn't check off the box. I think the fund balances is where I really wanted to start tonight and I wanted to answer any questions that anyone might have. Or have staff answer any questions, myself or Eli. If, if there's anything glaring or something you really want us to focus on. Over the next two weeks until we get to you with some real numbers.
Good job. Thank you.
Any questions for Gabe? I just have one really quick one, which was. In your budget where you talk about rate adjustments, optimization, big picture, future planning. That, this was already in there, right? This was what we had thought about back last year that we might do, because, okay. Okay, got it. All right. I didn't really have a specific question, but I just, just a general question.
I'd like to, on, on the next meeting, when we talk about lending money from the general fund to the water fund. Talk about how much money we would have had in our coffers if we were increasing rates two percent a year for the last five years. What would that would have been? Maybe we wouldn't have any loss right now.
All right, any?
Well, just, I, I don't know if this is the right time or place, but I think the city. Really ought to figure out a way to underground the, the last remaining power lines that are on VU and on. Underwood. And not, you know, that's not a cheap thing and PGD is setting aside like thirty-five cents every ten years for us. I don't want to wait for that. I want to, and I also don't want to make the, the citizens pay for that who. Who are unlucky enough to live underneath the few remaining feet of, of power lines. We all benefit by, by those things going underground. But again, with planning, right? With proper planning, we can do, you know, a hundred feet at a time. That's, that's something that I've heard over and over and over and over and. I don't think it's wise to wait for, for the PGD allotment because it's just such a small town will never see enough money out of PGD. Based on their formula for setting money aside from the ground. And we're not in fire zone, X, Y, and the view is not really, again, so few people are affected by it that our formula just isn't. Isn't enough to, to really rely on and yet really all, all of us benefit from the view improvement of those wires.
And I was just curious, I know it's a little outside of our purview, but has it ever been discussed to underground the wires on power lines on Trinidad then? Ever come up? I know that would be a whole different, but when you, you know, we took the cell tower off. And it's, I actually think that the. Electrical wires are even more kind of a threat. Be honest, but.
And that's, yeah.
Yeah, it's a land, so. Not saying we, yeah.
It hasn't been brought up before and, and we could almost consider it. However, just visualizing what you're talking about, with the poles and ground disturbance. It's a lot more limited than doing the power lines totally underneath.
Right. So you're saying there would be more ground disturbance that could be a cultural issue. I, I agree and I, I was, that's why I was wondering if it had ever been discussed. Because on the flip side, it's nice to get, get it off the, yeah, from a view perspective.
Just as Steve was saying. PGD is no longer putting money in for that kind of fund. They, they changed it. So, so the little money is no longer there.
There's about that thirty-five cents on the window replacement here.
Okay, so any public comments regarding?
Yeah, just very quickly, wanted to say thank you to the council for investing in the CIRP team for our community. I spoke briefly with Gabe tonight. I'll be forwarding budget, small loss budgetary request to the council. It's important to keep investing in the CIRP team. Our goal is to be. As self-sustaining as possible through fundraising, bake sales, that type of thing. We have access to grant funding with our own five one-on-three organization, we can apply to grants for to not burden city staff, but. We will have some ongoing costs and it would certainly ease the burden for our volunteer members to, to have those costs covered. So expect to see that and get that to Gabe too. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, are, are we doing wish lists at this point?
Yes, sure. Okay.
I, I don't know. Any way to put a, a figure on this yet, but the Animal Advisory Committee is going to be talking about things like dog parks. And that's, would mean fencing and signs and things like that. At least, I, I don't know what else we'll want, but I, I know that one is going to come up at some point.
And we'll talk to Zina and be thinking about things because we'll be talking about it some more as we craft next year's budget. Park some, look to park some money for various projects. All right, I don't see any other comments from the council, so let's move on to. The November twenty twenty-four city election and sales, so yes.
Is there anything else from the public?
I, I had asked for public comments before that, so I didn't see any, so I brought it back. Yeah, we, I kind of went to the public and then didn't see more and brought it back to the council. Thank you for keeping me on track though here. There's a lot of agenda items. November twenty twenty-four city election and sales tax and your update.
Me.
Okay.
This is something we're going to see every month until the election and then we'll be over with it. But I, I like to keep it in the calendar and on every agenda so we can, you know, understand. It helps me when it's in the agenda packet, you know, make sure I'm not missing any deadlines. So this month, May, we had an adoption of a resolution calling for the election proposal to extend the sales tax check. We had a resolution requesting an election consolidation with the county, check. And we've continued or started the budget preparation check. So next month, we'll, we have another meeting in May, but, and we're going to continue that budget in May, but we're also in June then going to have. Adoption of the budget and then we'll also prepare and announce the upcoming elections. So for those council members who are looking at retirement here in the headlights. That'll be the opportunity for them to go find their replacement.
I've actually asked Jack tonight nicely. He'll do it.
That's a tradition in Trinidad. Buy your replacement or you stay.
I'm looking.
Yeah, we've been, I've been putting out feelers too, but yeah, tough, tough shoes to fill, first of all, but.
That's all, no, no action required. This is just, I, I start with this month to make sure we check the boxes and then I'll throw out what's happening.
One thing I forgot to mention too is we have the community survey out right now. And so we will get responses back from that. That will help us hopefully by June have some, you know, better sense of the public priorities that we can represent. So that'll be helpful. All right, any questions for Gabe on this item, on? Election and sales tax? Okay, any public questions regarding item number seven? I don't see any, so I'll bring it back to the council. There's no vote or anything on this one, so. Thank you, Gabe, very much for keeping us on track. The next item is future agenda items. Are there anything anybody wants to add?
So May twenty-eighth, just so I'm clear, is the water introduction to the water rate study and another budget discussion.
Correct, yeah.
And, and just so I'm clear, are we going to announce it to the public or send a letter out at the twenty-eighth or for June? Eli, what do you think?
I, I think it's, if we're going to send a letter out, I think we should send it before the twenty-eighth. Give people an opportunity. Yeah, yeah, before the twenty-eighth, they could attend either the twenty-eight or the.
There are two meetings and it'll be an opportunity. If we can, if people understand all that goes into it, there'll be less of a rebellion when they get the rate increase.
Okay, well hopefully, that, that sounds good. Yeah, so ideally we would say that we'll have the first one, May twenty-eighth. And that we'll be. Having another one in June, you know, at the next meeting. The only thing I'm noting is that there could be the possibility where, as Steve was saying. You know, she might have a number of things to address and maybe might not be able to come back in June.
We could continue the discussion.
Yeah, we'll continue the discussion, exactly.
Okay, so.
Just to ask Gabe, and of course Jennifer's here also, we think that's a doable thing within two weeks to get a letter out.
Yeah, that was, that was even Samantha, that was one of Samantha's recommendations, that we, we put. Some PR out there to kind of warm the public up to this coming. Now, you guys are in the driver's seat of this water rate study. It's, it's partially the. Ratepayers, they get to, they call a protest hearing. It's not, they, they don't get to vote yes or no, but if fifty-one percent of the vote of the ratepayers all outcry. And we've got a list of them and say, no, go back to the drawing board. We can go back to the drawing. Or if you have twenty of them in here and they're loud and they don't like it, or if it's the right group. Of people who are going to be affected the most, you can say, go back to the drawing. The rate study is being paid for by the Department of Water Resources, but through money, right, coming through to RCAC. So this is a.
And it's actually USDA.
Oh, I'm sorry, USDA, correct. USDA, so the USDA is paying for us to have our rate study done. Last time we checked on it, GHD, this was. Back to Jack's question about, why didn't we do this sooner? I think it goes back to twenty eighteen, nineteen. And I think it was the GHD at that time said it would be about fifteen thousand dollars. So I know they have some budget restrictions in, in terms of how much time, but last time I checked with her, she is. You know, well under budget at this point from USDA for, for this particular project. So if we have to have a second or a third hearing.
I mean, nobody ever likes a rate increase, but I, I expect the questions to center a bit more on. The water plant expenses and the water reserves and more of those kinds of questions, which I think we can answer and hopefully in the meeting, but.
The other thing that we need to get across to everybody is, you know, when, when she adds up what the expenses are. Somehow we've got to cover those expenses. It's like, okay, how do we do it? That could be a second question. But for people to say, you know, I want to keep the same rate or I want to increase it by ten bucks or, and it doesn't count the expenses, it's unrealistic. But for people to say, you know, I want to keep the same rate or I want to increase it by ten bucks, and it doesn't come with expenses, it's unrealistic.
And I'm assuming it's pretty easy to follow up with a, or to also send the same letter by email so that folks like me who don't go to the post office every day can still.
The whole fronts, we'll be sending this message.
All right, so what I hear is saying is that we, yes, we can send the letter before May twenty-eighth and or email available email addresses, and if staff needs help, then RCAC may be able to, or, you know, please call in one of us if you need.
And, and the other part is to make sure that we comment that, you know, we'll be having a meeting on the twenty-eighth and they'll also have Zoom available so that people can choose between the two, rather than trying to squeeze too many people in one spot.
And then the other thing we're going to try to do is sit in a closed session, just so everybody knows, between now and the twenty-eighth, I guess we'll reach out for dates that work for everybody, a closed session to continue tonight's closed session discussion, which we didn't finish, so. And then I would like to tee up annexation, I'll just mention that again, we talked about having a last host speaker come in and just for education purposes, but I think we could also talk about, I kind of, what kind of annexation would we need to do, for example, to increase the size of our cemetery? Because apparently it's not just buying real estate, there might be a little annexation involved potentially, or would there be? That would be a good question, so I think I'm, there's, you know, there's kind of baby steps of just little annexation, and then there's the huge topic of annexation, which is a whole different thing.
And, and just to remember, remind everyone, we have, from the water studies, we have three areas pre-identified as, as already vetted annexation pockets, mostly in and around the, the front and road and that area going up north, so.
Yeah.
We already have areas for us to consider that were well, in my opinion, well vetted by lots of different.
Yeah, like A, B and C.
Yep, exactly, so zones, I would rather us continue at least to talk about those zones since they've already been thought of because of, you know, the amount of water customers that are there, the amount of increased revenue from X, Y and Z taxes and such, so. Anyway, I just, I don't want us to pay for something that we've already done.
Agreed, yeah, that makes sense, so I wanted to tee that up. And then just one other thing, because the siren went off during our meeting. I was sort of thinking, maybe it would be nice to have Sean come in once a quarter or something, not every month necessarily, but once a quarter and just kind of tell us what kind of calls they're getting for the volunteer fire department and, you know. When they, I, they were out Saturday night down by my house, someone had fallen on the trail and, and broke their ankle. Really? And I just, yeah, really appreciated them coming out, and there was also a cal fire and so forth, so be interesting to hear what kind of calls they're getting. That's all I have for future topics, any other, okay? All right, with, then with that, I believe we are adjourned, so thank you, everyone.